Okay, I think we're ready to call the meeting to order. And can the -- start the world. Commissioner Barrett?
Here.
DeWitt?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
McDonald-Rivette?
Here.
So Peter? Peter Schaffer?
Here.
Shannon?
Here.
Tilly?
Here.
Woolley?
Present.
Thank you. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes?
Okay, approved.
Two seconds. Okay, so any changes, comments, questions in the minutes from all the meetings? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
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 Opposed, aye? Okay, the minutes are passed. So, we'd like to welcome you all to our first town hall meeting on the charter. As we begin our deliberations and think about the potential revisions to the charter, we've got -- we're going to start with a brief overview of the work, the kinds of things that the charter does, the things that the charter does not do, and talk a little bit about how the rest of the meeting is going to go. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight to the Bay City Charter Commission, our first town hall meeting for 2018. We intend to have a second meeting this May 22 at TL Handy Middle School. There's a few things that we'd like to accomplish tonight at tonight's town hall meeting. The nine city charter commissioners that are up here up front were elected last November to review the city charter after the city charter question passed. Part of our duties are to educate the residents of Bay City on what the city charter is and how it affects the operation of the city government. The charter commission will review the city charter and make suggested changes to the city's governing document. The city charter will then be sent to the governor for review by the Attorney General office to ensure that our new document is legally correct and not in conflict with any state laws. After review by the Attorney General, the city charter will be sent back to the city clerk for her to place on the ballot for the voters to vote on. If the charter is approved at the election, it will become the new city charter. If the charter is defeated, there are a couple options for the charter commission. We can do nothing and end our term, or we can review the city charter again and revise it. It then will follow the same process as I've stated previously. We are allowed by law to present a new city charter to the voters three times. We also have to complete our task within a three-year period. I want to point out that I had a privilege of serving on the city charter commission the last time it was reviewed, 23 years ago. Tonight, we're going to have a slide presentation that's been presented by -- prepared by Commissioner Alex DeWitt to provide you with some more information on what we're trying to accomplish. The biggest part of tonight's meeting is to receive public input. After the slide presentation, we will open the meeting to public comment. We will follow simple rules of public meeting decorum, similar to the rules that govern the Bay City Commission meetings. You will be asked to come up to the podium, state your name and address for public record, and be allowed once to speak up to three minutes to share your thoughts and concerns about the Bay City charter. Commissioner Chris Shannon will serve as timekeeper and will give you a warning with approximately 15 seconds to go. When the time expires, I will thank you for your comments and encourage the next speaker to come forward. Sorry. We are seeking the public's input tonight to see what revisions that you would like us to consider for the Bay City charter. We want the public as stakeholders to feel a part of this process. Upon conclusion of the public comment, I will make a couple closing remarks and then turn the meeting back over to Chairwoman McDonald-Rivette. And we'll start the slide presentation now. And who we are, the nine charter commissioners are up on the screen, and we are all present tonight. Kirsten McDonald-Rivette is the president, Mike Woolley, vice president, Chris Shannon, sergeant-at-arms, and I'm tonight's moderator. Other members of the commission are Alexander DeWitt, Elizabeth Peters, Carrie Sapetta, Nick Schaefer, and Don Tilly. The basics about the charter. It's the framework for city government. It guides city's operations. It can be updated once every 20 years. It requires state approval, and then ultimately the voters of the Bay City will decide to approve it or not to approve it. The Bay City charter was last approved in 1997 and then was reopened with the passage of the charter review question in 2017. The charter is available on the city's website. If you go to that link, you'll be able to review the city charter. And we have handouts also tonight up front on your way in. These are some of the things that can't be done within the charter. Create or remove ordinances. There's going to be no bridge decision here tonight. We can't pay for officials. We can't make budgetary decisions. We do not make day-to-day affairs of the city. We do not make decisions on that, and we don't advise current city commission or city officials. Questions that we're asking the community. What parts of city government work for you? What are the areas that need to be strengthened? What do you want changed? What do you want to remain in the city charter? The city currently has nine wards with each commissioner representing a ward. Is this too many? Not enough? Would you rather vote on even or odd years for city positions? Should the mayor be elected directly by the voters or appointed by the city commission? Currently, the mayor does not get a permanent vote on the city commission. Should that change? And now, this is the part where we're going to open it up for public comment. We would ask you to come up to the podium. The middle mic is there for you. We'd ask you to sign in if you'd like to. You will have up to three minutes to talk, share your views and thoughts, and Commissioner Chris Shannon will remind you that you'll have about 15 seconds left. So, would somebody like to come up and start to make some comments?
Before our first speaker starts with you, Commissioner Barrett, I just wanted to let folks know and remind commissioners that this purpose is for public input. We will not be engaging in debating issues or asking questions or comments. We're here just to listen to what you have to say.
Hello, my name is Rick Luzak, 1707 Fremont, Bay City. Very briefly, I'm in favor of keeping the number of commissioners at nine. Reducing the number of commissioners is an attack on democracy. It's concentrating power into the hands of too few people. In addition, I believe that the charter should be changed to allow or to require the commission to sell bonds with the approval of the citizenry. There should be routine referendums on whether we're going to go into debt. I have a master's degree in computer science. I have a lot of experience in private industry on this. I cannot see into the city operations, but as best as I can tell, somehow, within the framework of the charter, I think you should address this, that most of the city computers should be for the purpose of security and protecting the infrastructure of the city. Most of the computers should be disconnected from the internet. We know that there are cyber attacks all the time. City of Atlanta, two or three weeks ago, had a major attack on its infrastructure. We hear about it, cyber attacks on the electric grid, nuclear power plants, and so forth. And I think that the charter should direct the commission to safeguard the information of the city. I believe that you should expand access to information from the city. Documents should be available, not within the state parameters, state law parameters of five days or 15 days, whatever. I think documents should be available within 24 hours. In addition, to, let's see, I'm scanning here. I'm concerned that the city should have, each department head should have an emergency plan for their department, which addresses responses to natural and man-made disasters. And I recall, to remember, the how the city was sort of floundering to find where a big water leak occurred. And somehow, somehow, I think it should be set in stone that these emergency plans should exist and should be activated when it's necessary.
Luzak, you have about 15 seconds.
Okay, these are my major suggestions this evening. Thank you.
Just one more kind of process, sorry, before you start. We do have actually forms on the table back there. If you don't get the time to say everything that you'd like to say, you'd like to be able to submit comments in writing. There are forms in the lounge. They're welcome to use.
Okay, I'll just do this after. My name is Anne Yandel. I live at 223 Jensen Place. First of all, look, I thought this was a town hall meeting where people could, you know, ask questions, not just, you know, I'm kind of upset that we might have one chance to say something. Somebody else might say something, or we might get a chance to read this. We might learn something here and then have something else we want to ask or say. So it's not a typical meeting where we have a city commission meeting and you have an agenda. And so, just think about that. It's a town hall meeting. I thought it'd be sort of a casual thing, and we'd ask questions, we'd learn more. So I don't really like the premise that we only get to say something once. So there goes my three minutes, you know? So don't take that the wrong way, but you get the idea. It's a town hall meeting. You see those on TV. So anyway, I agree with nine commissioners. I agree with what this gentleman said. Even beyond that, yeah, I think it, just leave it alone. I'm concerned that the charter doesn't allow people to vote, the public to vote on big things. So anytime the city is going to do something, make decisions, like override the planning commission, for example, why does it, why does that happen? Why is it so difficult to get a ballot issue for something that is for the entire city that affects the public? So I'll use an example of if we're going to put a bankruptcy court on the river, that's public land, it was originally blah, 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 you get the idea. Things that affect us, we should have an easier time getting it to the people. In other words, the people should be able to vote. We shouldn't have outside forces, people that don't pay taxes here, make decisions. And that's what happens, and that's what's happening here now in our city. So whatever we have to do on the charter to allow a public vote for public issues needs to happen. The mayor should be elected by the people, not appointed. That's my opinion. I think also the mayor should get a vote, not just a tiebreaker vote, and not just a veto. I think our mayor, who's elected at large, should get a vote. I don't care if it ends up there's 10 votes. Take another vote, but let the mayor speak, because the mayor, he or she, has been elected by the entire community. So that's my opinion. Thanks for listening. Good luck, everybody.
I hope you can hear me. Okay.
Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, sir.
You've got to hold it real close.
I know it here well, so I, but I am, I was on this prior committee at the charter commission, and I had pushed for a long time. I served two terms with the commission, pushed for a long time to change the number of commissioners from nine.
Sir, could you state your name for the record?
Oh, Ralph Cabran, 911, Germania. I'm sorry. I am concerned about the number of people we have. We are one of the few cities, if any, left. I didn't do the research. I have got nine commissioners. We have lost in the city a population of 55,000 people. In the 1960s, we got 34,000. Today, still the same number of people representing them. You're going to make the rules, but good men can make poor government out of bad rules, where good men can't, poor men can't make good government out of good rules. So what you've got to be concerned about is who you elect, not the rules they run by. We have not had an overabundance of quality leadership in the city for years. They get good money, they get, I think it's around $5,000 a year now. It's the same thing as a part-time job. My asking would be, one, to change the number of commissioners to five. Change the pay to $500 a year so that not everyone for a part-time job. And I don't care what you do with the other positions as far as it goes, but you are going to be doing an important thing. It won't come up again. It was the 20 years that the charter gets revised again, possibly. This is the opportunity to do it. Try and get down to five commissioners. One of the few cities, again, that's got nine. And this five doesn't mean you're going to have good leadership, but it certainly means you're going to have less support leadership. And I don't think Bay City has been blessed with an overabundance of quality leaders for years. Most of the people that have been there have had the same position work-wise as when they started out. They are not proven leaders. They're not successful people. They're well-intentioned people, but we don't need that. We need quality leadership in the city. There are currently today over 700 vacant houses in Bay City. 700! And you can't afford, a vacant house doesn't pay anything. You can't afford that, and I've never heard it mentioned. I've never heard to be concerned about the loss in population. Good leadership will work on that. You've got to get good, quality leaders within the community, and it certainly doesn't mean you're going to have good ones with five, but you'll have less bad ones. But my biggest concern is quality leadership. And it isn't there, and it hasn't been for years. I would, in the years that I've been watching government, I would say there haven't been a dozen, at the most, quality people. Most of them, I said, they all seem to have good intentions. They're well, they really think you're going to do a good job, but they don't. I used to ask people why they voted for an individual, and they said, well, he came to my door and asked for. He came to my door and asked for his support. I said, the mailman's there every day, why don't you vote for him? No, it doesn't make sense that you vote for a person just because he comes to your door and asks for a vote. You vote for a person for one reason. Not that he belongs to your church, your party, or anything, that he's a qualified, competent individual, and you're going to help set those rules if you come up with a different, you might not have good commissioners, but you'll have less bad ones.
Sorry, sir.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Phil.
Well, Charter Commission, I'm glad to be here tonight. You know, I want to get involved with city politics, and my big thing is I'm a big advocate of children.
Sir, if you don't mind, could you state your name and address?
You're right. I forgot. My name's Ruben Garcia, and I reside at 816 North Hampton Street here in Bay City, Michigan. You know, I read a little bit about what Kristen McDonald-Rivette said about getting the word out and how, you know, there's a lack of participation. And I think it's something that you need to be creative about. Grow the marketing, for instance. Anybody that has seen a concert poster knows, you know, when an act's coming into town. Or take a lesson from Wayneona Park. There are hundreds and hundreds of people that come there because there's a draw. And I think it's because, you know, there's been a little bit of a bad reputation, you know, in politics in general, you know? Going down the line of issues here or topics, election years. Anytime that logistically we can save money, let's do it. You know, my old man used to tell me, if you live like you're poor, you're going to have food in the fridge all the time. So this is a time where we need to, you know, save that money. Mayor's election, certainly by the people. Mayor's power. These days, you know, to have one person, you know, make all the calls, it doesn't work for me. I'd rather have the nine commissioners that we have to more or less, well, make everybody honest, okay? Term limits, they should be where they're at. New blood. There's always good new blood. You talking about how it's stale lately? Well, if you feed new blood into the system, especially with our kids, I love what the kids are doing right now, you know, you're going to have good government. You know, I want to give kudos to them live. Now, this is something that the commission should be doing, you know, getting a survey out there. And here, geez, for instance, how many members should be elected to the Bay City Commission? Nine, 42%. And they go on down the line. These are things that you need to be thinking about logistically. It's not rocket science, unless, you know, people get, well, I'll say it. My old man would say, a little lazy about their office, about what they're doing. You know, five grand? I didn't know you got paid that, you know? And not to say it's a lot, but, you know, it does pay the gas bill, right? As far as to and from. Okay, one thing that I did want to point out, the bridge, that's a bad issue for me. Okay, I'm no mathematician. 20,000 vehicles, according to M-Live, that go back and forth daily at two bucks a toll at 365 days a week equals to $14 million. After five years, $70 million. I want to be an investor. Logistics, think about it, okay? Thank you.
Yes, hello, my name is Michael Wiki, that I live at 206 North Dewitt Street, and I got an issue with utilities bill, and then they say, if you want to change, you've got to come down here and tell the people what needs to be changed. And I feel that I want, would like to have a choice. I would like to have a choice between either choosing to buy my electricity through the city of Bay City or Consumers Power. Now, the way that I feel, the way that this is set up now, that this is not a democracy, that I feel that I'm being forced to buy my electric through the city of Bay City. I would like to see a change where the city, the citizens of Bay City can have a choice between either consumers or the city of Bay City. That way, then you got, you know, what I'm saying here? And then the way I feel about it, that they're just shoving, like, you got to buy it from us. And to me, that's not no democracy. That I would like to have a choice. And that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shane Reinhardt. I live at 1791 West German Road, Bay City, Michigan. Own several properties in Bay City. I believe we should have nine commissioners. I believe they should have a little bit more say-so. If they're in the areas, they should be driving around looking at these houses. I just went and appealed my taxes. Within a one-block area of my home, city block this way, city block that way, six of them have blue tarps on the roof. Roofs caved in, different things like this, and the city's raising my taxes. People, they aren't going up in value, they're going down in value. We need to find a way when our inspectors, which are paid for by the landlords and landlords and property owners of the city, to have more bite. They don't have enough bite to come in, and it takes six months to two years to get these things taken care of. They need to have bite. They need to start either. We can pass rules and we can pass laws, not here, but we can do it in town, in the hall. And have it done to where if we send a letter out to you and a year later ain't done, we're going to assess your nice house, the one you live in. If it's in Michigan, we're going after it. You'll fix a sloppy house, 700 or something homes empty in Bay City? Why? Well, the landlord's got it figured out. I'm not a slumlord. I've got one I've got to work on, 811 South Jefferson. Okay, I got to put a new roof on it, put it on years ago, and time for a new one. And if we're not going to make it and take care of this area, we might as well move to Flint, because it's coming. It's just the way it is. Okay, move on to the next thing. Sorry, I get excited. The vote, we need to vote on things. The city voted itself a raise, the commissioners. It's a public service spot. I'd like to run for an office. I don't live in Bay City. I can't run. I'm against it. Okay, we need to change that. There's a lot of people that want to get time and would like to run and like to do things that are not in Bay City. If they have an interest in Bay City, like own a business or a property, I'm out in the country because I want acreage. I can't get that in the city. There's only one house I know that's got acreage in Bay City. It's off the Union or Jenny coming into town. They got a bunch of acreage, and I don't know what they're paying taxes. It's got to be an absorbent amount. I said, that's why I don't live here. And our police department is forced, and our fire department is forced to live within Bay City limits, okay? I understand some of that, but I don't understand why a person that has an interest in Bay City can't run for an office because he's outside of it, yet he owns property, pays taxes. In fact, he pays more taxes than most people that own a home because it's an investment property, if the landlord is a tenant, and you pay, you pay more for that. So you pay top value, you don't get a percentage knocked off because it's your own living home, okay? You get that cut. I don't get that cut on mine. In some of my homes, I'm paying twice what everybody else is paying. I'll just let it go at that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Woholgak. I reside at 1308 South May Street, West Side Bay City. A lot of things that the people previous to me have mentioned, I agree with. I feel very strongly that our mayor should be elected. That should be in the hands of the voters, and she should maintain the right for a, to veto or to break a tie. I am for term limits on the commission. I also believe that the number of commissioners should be reduced for a city of our size. And again, I believe that perhaps there should be more creative ways. I wish I were, I could present at this time some way to be more creative to help the city of Bay City in that respect. I also believe that the election should be on even number of years. If we can save some money, we are not a rich city. A few dollars here start to add up if we start looking at departments to gather money to proceed with projects that we need to do here in Bay City. And this one issue, I don't know if it comes under the charter, but the idea of when work is done, any city work that is done in Bay City, the streets, the sewers, that the companies that are performing that work, their work be inspected continuously, any defects or problems, that company then is held responsible for complete payment, redo of said job, and payment is withheld until it meets quality inspection. Also, with the buildings, yes, I think it would behoove you as commissioners also to come into your wards, into the different parts of the city, and take a look at what's really happening in our communities. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Mike Rosnowski, I reside at nineteen oh eight Thirty-second Street here in Bay City. Real quickly, I believe the mayor should be directly elected. They don't directly elect in SAG, it doesn't work out that great for them. Keep nine commissioners or more. Reducing is not a good idea. The money is inconsequential. I don't know exactly what you make it, somewhere between five and seven thousand dollars a year for nine commissioners. And you're talking about what a lot of people don't realize, a city with a budget of somewhere between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty-five million dollars a year through grants and subsidies and through the taxes is actually a very small portion of it. And that's a small amount of money, when people complain about how much money commissioners make, they make a penance. A lot of you sat on commissions, I can see them, and you may have served as mayors, so, Mr. Cameron's not here, I disagree. You don't need less, you need the same or more. There's absolutely nothing wrong with having nine people in a room trying to come up with answers to difficult problems and difficult decisions. Having less does not make any sense, if anything, more. That's just my idea, and also I disagree with Mr. Cameron, because if you sat on commissions, he said you would, the cream would basically rise to the top, you would have more people, good commissioners, but less bad ones. Well, which ones are the bad ones? You have to ask yourself, were you a bad one or were you a good one when you served as commissioner or mayor? Everyone, of course, thinks they're the good ones. I don't blame you. So I disagree with Mr. Cameron in that respect. I would like to keep the mayor with the veto power, not with the direct vote. Nine votes is generally, an odd number will get you a decision, a five to four, a six to three. If there's a tie, someone off sick, the mayor can pass a veto or not, or even cast a tie vote, in some cases, not even a veto, if it's a tie, the mayor can cast a vote. And that's worked really well. And I'd also like to see the, I'd like to see the commission elected on even years along with the federal and state elections, that saves money. And I guess that's about it. Good luck.
Yes, my name is Bob Kennedy. And I worked with Earl Covisto. I don't know if you folks have ever met Earl. And we also shared a suite in City Hall with Ron McIlvery and Mac. And after I had my auto accident, I've had nothing but time. So I decided to write a book. It's not much of a book. Giving credit to Ron McIlvery. A lot of you folks probably never met Ron, but he died a few years ago. And he told me, when we worked together, that he had initially wanted to see another bridge built, so we could, the traffic that was going past Bay City had a means of getting around the city. So I thought about that, and I thought, how do we go about doing that? And I don't know if you folks realize where M-15 Michigan Highway goes on the north and south direction. Right now, it's been rerouted through the city.
Sir, you have about fifteen seconds remaining.
I got to think it well.
Move to extension.
I know this idea might be kind of...
One moment, please. I second that movement. No objections. Sir, you may continue for another two minutes.
I thought about Mac. Mac was a very brilliant man. And he stayed with the city his entire life. And he was responsible for getting Veterans Park built. And also, he designed the bridge to go Veterans Bridge. That was Mac's design. When he was in college, he was told to pick a city that you would like to be in, and do a design of how it should be constructed. Well, Mac had been to Bay City, and he came, he took that on as a challenge. So he designed a plan to develop Bay City. His designs unfortunately have been lost over the years.
Sir, regretfully, your time has expired.
So I was thinking about it.
Sir, your time has expired. Regretfully, report that your time has expired.
Your time's all up, Mr. Kennedy. Your time is up right now. Your time to talk.
Time's up, Bob. You're out of time, buddy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kennedy, I don't know if you heard that, but Mr. Kennedy was the former director of Public Works in Bay City.
Christian Gerard, one hundred Bradock Street in Bay City. Just a few things. You know, I personally believe that we could go down on commissioners. I look at, you know, historically, how many times that we had folks running opposed, and usually there's two or three each time. So I think you wanna take that into consideration. If you went down to somewhere, even to seven, I think hopefully you'd have more competitive races. If you stayed at nine, my personal belief, go to five wards and then four at large. So at least, you know, we get some competition in those races, so there's not any unopposed seats anytime. Because the more choices we have, the better we have for our citizenry. Being that I ran for mayor this last time, I do agree that we should go to an even system, just because when we ran even on, there were, what, four wards, that that was the only thing on the ballot, was the mayor's race, and so there was a lot of costs associated with that. So if you had the system where everybody was up for election at the same time, that way they'd be voting at least for a commissioner and the mayor's race together, so it'd bring them more out. Because if you're paying to have an election anyways, you might as well try to get the best turnout possible. As far as the mayor voting, I mean, truthfully, I know some people haven't been supportive of it. Either way, I think since the people as a whole voice is electing that person, they probably should have a say. Is that any greater than the commissioners? I don't know. You might then evaluate the number of commissioners, because if you have too many even numbers, you may split into tie vote, so I guess when you evaluate the numbers that you need. Overall, you know, I think those are your main things you're looking at. It's not in the commission, but it's really, how do we become more business-friendly as a community? I wish we can put that in there, it's not always, as a businessperson, it's a little tough sometimes doing business with the city, and so I wish we could codify that and make us customer service friendly at times, so, that's all.
Lindsay Edmonds, one thousand three Washington Avenue. I own the public house downtown in Harless and Hugh Coffee. Here to speak on the business side of things. As much as I believe our homes in this area need to be fixed and watched on, I think our downtown and the business coming to the town is equally as important. I don't know how a lot of this stuff works. Are there ways to protect the businesses downtown? We are in a growing, emerging downtown. I think there's a lot of positive things to be said about what's happening downtown. For instance, you may or may not know of the lawsuit regarding the public house, the residents that live above on Adams Street. The pedal trolley, for instance, has been removed from Adams Street because of the residents in the Shear Building. Are there ways to protect, you know, it's the most beautiful street right now in the city with City Market, the Times Loft, and the development of the Shear Building. Are there ways the charter can protect and preserve our businesses from being kicked out by residents who are choosing to live downtown? I think there's a way for all of us to coexist. I think these are problems that are going to continue to rise in a city where there's more condos and apartments being built, we're hearing about it almost every month. And there's businesses down below where these people are, where residents are living. So I guess I'm here just to present a question of, how can we coexist in a very positive downtown where people want to both live and do business? I wish you guys luck, thank you for the time. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name's Brandy Swartz, I live at nine-one-one McKinley Ave. And my significant other and I bought a home there in July, and we found you through Zillow. And when I tell people that we moved here just by accident, they say, why? Not encouraging. I'm from a small coastal town in Florida, and my significant other's from a small coastal town in Maine. And you guys are adorable. But boy, term limits, definitely. I was pretty excited to hear that until I found out that the mayor who was elected last has been in office since nineteen ninety-one, with the exception of four years. So even though we have term limits, apparently there's a way around them. As far as fewer, where I'm from, we have five, it works great, everybody is represented. The town that I grew up in is about the same size as this one. And I agree with the former mayor that it does bring quality. And I am encouraged, I have met other people like me on the street, I know there are more people coming. I'd really like to see an upward movement with this place. I mean, it deserves it. You guys have walkability, the downtown businesses, we live specifically close enough, I mean, we did everything literally using Google Maps because I wanted to be able to walk downtown and hang out. And some of the decisions I see being made, as far as how many commissioners are on, I see them excluding other commissioners to avoid the Open Meetings Act, and just weird exclusionary stuff going on. I've only been here for a few months, but it's been long enough to be underwhelmed by what's happening, and I'm really hoping that we're gonna see a direction change with the change in the charter, because you guys have some control in this. Thank you.
Teresa Lang, four-eleven South Hampton Street. I would like to see the mayor elected by the people. I would like to see what Mr. Gerard had just spoken to you about limiting or cutting back on some of the commissioners for the competition. I'd like to see the voting happen in the even years because of the cost. And I would like to see the mayor have the veto powers, have that remain the same. There's a couple other areas in the city that I see, one question up there, were the areas that need to be strengthened? One of the areas that I have, I've been in my house for twenty-six years, going on twenty-seven, and I've seen a lot of changes in the city, I see people come back to the city, and they're just been discouraged by seeing the changes. But what my issue is, is the amount of rentals in the city. The housing, you guys had, they had the study done, and I thought something was gonna happen. I went around walking in my block, around my neighborhoods. If I saw signs up for a house to be rented, I took down the address, I called Sue Coggins, gave her the address, the number, whatever I could find on it, so that it would get registered. In my neighborhood, I have twelve homes on my little block. Right now, there's four that are being rented. The fifth one is now pending on the other side of me. I am surrounded by rentals. I have brought this up to the commission twice, I've written a letter to my commissioner, I get no response. They tell me that, I talked to Steve King when he was in office as community director, and he told me that Lansing has the same problem. And what they're doing is they're cutting back on the number of licenses in the city, because you can't tell somebody when they buy a home, you can't run it. So if you limit the number of licensing in the city, hopefully, maybe we can cut back on some of these neighborhoods that somebody says, well, I'm just gonna run it, make money. I mean, we're trying to keep our homes up, and I know what I'm seeing with... And I know what I'm seeing with some of the renters. I know this is probably minor, and it's not really an issue to other cities having this ordinance, but even raking their leaves in the fall, I, I'm ready to put snow fences up, because the people next to me won't rake their lawn.
Teresa, you have about 15 seconds remaining.
Okay. Anyways, I would like to see if the licensing can be limited in the city. And also, if the licenses, when I talked to Sue Coggins about, nobody knows how many licenses are being rented out there. I tried to get the numbers, so I could present that to you, but I don't have the numbers yet. But there's too many homes that are being rented, and they really don't know. According to the paper, that cannot be true, because we have 13,600 homes in our city. And between six and seven are being, six to 7,000 are being rented. That's nearly, that's half. Sad.
Pardon me.
Okay. All right.
I live at 205 Ingraham in the South End. I will have been there 40 years next year. I am piggybacking on what she just said about the neighborhood. From Lafayette to McGraw is the pits. And from Broadway to the river is even worse. It's not all rentals, it's just blight. And I don't want to move, but I'm seriously considering it. I thought about a privacy fence. In my block, I probably have, there's two for sure that are real nasty. So what areas need to be strengthened is code enforcement. They need to get out and drive around. I am going to get addresses of all these places, and I'm going to turn them in, and I'm going to wait and see, because nothing is happening. Windows are broken out, boards are up, blue tarps are all over the place, and it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. So that's what I think needs to be strengthened.
Good.
Tammy Clermont, 906 Webster Street. I wanted to piggyback on what this woman said as well. I bought my house in 2004, and I'm also a property owner in Frankenmuth. My house there is worth five times what my house in Bay City is worth, but my taxes are not five times what I pay here. I'd sell my house, but it's a small house, and I would lose $20,000 if I tried to sell it still today. I agree with her. I am registered as a rental, and I get code enforcement if my lawn isn't mowed every single week. Yeah, people in my neighborhood have tarps on their, on their roofs, there's trash, there's, it is blight. She's exactly right. And I am also, I came here tonight as a business owner, because I'm a new business in Bay City, and I have yet to purchase property, and I'm concerned about some of the things. Obviously, the bridge issue would impact me greatly. But there is a huge disconnect with being a business owner, and the progress that's been made downtown just does not mesh with the mess of the housing industry or the housing market here. I agree that there has to be some sort of a code enforcement, some sort of a licensing restriction, and we need to try to reduce the rentals in the city. And I also agree that the mayor should be elected by the people. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the Charter Commission? Anybody else?
I live at 1308 South May. And my biggest question is, does the commission know that there is a West Side Bay City? And in the past years... Thank you. I went on a street that's terrible. I mean, it's embarrassing. And I don't think not one of you people have traveled it, have you? Have any of you gone down Guanona? No. You don't know what kind of a rut it is. It cost us money, we've got damaged our front ends. And now that they're all going down Ionia Street, which is another one that is really going bad. But any kind of a project that comes up, East Side gets it. What's the matter with the West Side? Aren't we Bay City? Or should we just abandon ourselves and start our own West Side? But I think, your commissioners, you've got to start driving around the city. It's terrible. I tell you, the West Side is just strictly terrible. We do not have one good street, other than Salisbury, which they revamped. But I think it's about time you people start riding around and get the West Side fixed up. You come in from the expressway, you think you're going into a dungeon. There's nothing there appealing. You come in from the west, oh yeah, you got Center Avenue, you get downtown, nice. But across the river, what do you got? Nothing. So I think it's about time you people just got around. We do pay taxes, you know? And I think we're entitled to have some things done on the West Side. And that's all I've got to say.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up and make a public comment? I would like to thank you on behalf of the entire Charter Commission for attending tonight's Town Hall meeting and providing us with some of your views and thoughts on what you'd like us to address in the new city charter. You're more than welcome to attend any of our regularly scheduled City Charter Commission meetings. You can check the dates on the city of Bay City's website. Again, we will have a second Town Hall on May 22nd at Handy Middle School located at 601 Blend Street on the West Side of Bay City. At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting back over to Chairman Kirsten McDonald-Rubek.
So, excuse me, but can we have to go to the website? Do you all want to have a meeting with her? So there, for folks that are interested, there are paper comments, if you want to submit some, if you want to submit additional comments. As we stated at the top of the meeting, you're very welcome to place those in writing there and mail them in or deliver them to City, to City Hall in the clerk's office. We will have a second opportunity to do a Town Hall-style meeting like this one at the end of May. And then, as always, at our meetings, where there is opportunity for public comment at every meeting.
April 10th is our next one.
April 10th is our next.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Same place?
It's at the, it's City Hall.
City Hall.
Third floor.
Room 360.
Yes. Okay, moving on. Are there any announcements, concerns, questions from the commission? Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.